Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the reorganization meeting of the Mathacton Board of School Directors on December 4th, 2023. To order, please rise for the pledge.
By way of attendance, all members of the sitting board are present, which are myself and Ms. Cancro. The board will now take a public comment on board action items and opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda of the reorganization meeting. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. Any comments on board action items this evening for this meeting?
John Andrews, Law of Providence. Looking over the agenda, it seems to be lacking the swearing in of new directors. You don't even have a quorum at this point. And is that just a goof up, or is there something that I'm missing? Thank you.
Any other public comments on board action items? All right, seeing none, there will be an election of a temporary president, and that temporary president will then be present for the swearing in of the new board members, and then a election of president will take place. I will now take nominations for temporary president to preside over the reading of certificates of election for school board, the swearing in of elected officials, and the election of board president for a one-year term. May I have a nomination for temporary president?
I nominate Ms. Alston.
Any other nominations? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the nominations, and I will assume the role of temporary president. Thank you, Ms. Cancro.
You're welcome.
As temporary president, I will now read the certificates of election for school board directors of the Mathacton School District from November 2023. I will now read all the results for the four-year term. For the general election for Mathacton School Director for the four-year term, the vote totals are as follows: Kathleen M. Thiel, total 6,542 votes; Kate Graff, 6,441 votes; Pooja Chanda, 6,197 votes; Samira Purdue, 6,110 votes; Paul Winters, 6,331 votes; Jim Beam, 5,148 votes; Kathy Muscarella, 4,989 votes; Deborah McGinley, 4,949 votes; Sheila Smith, 4,938 votes; and Sissy Hill, 4,600 votes. The winners of that election were Kathleen M. Thiel, Kate Graff, Pooja Chanda, Samira Purdue, and Paul Winters. Next, in the election of Mathacton School Director for a two-year term, the vote totals are as follows: Glenn Mersky, 6,315 votes; Kathy Cleary, 6,558 votes; John Mack, 5,039 votes; and Ken Boss, 4,938 votes. The winners, excuse me, the winners of that election were Glenn Mersky and Kathy Cleary. I will now ask the Honorable Judge Thomas P. Rogers to conduct the swearing in of elected officials at this time.
Ms. Chanda, if you want to bring your family forward, please. Judge will have you here. Want someone to hold the microphone for you?
Sure.
Yep. Sure. How are you? Could you put your left hand on the lap, raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
Aye. The State's full name.
I, Pooja Chanda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Cleary?
I'm sure.
Whatever. I mean, yeah. So you put your left hand on the lap. There you go. Got it. And repeat after me.
Aye. The State's full name.
Aye, Kathy Cleary.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have to go to the board table now.
I can have the board.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Am I right?
Aye. The State's full name.
I, Kate Graff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I would discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have to go to the board table now.
I can have the board.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Am I right?
Aye. The State's full name.
I, Kate Graff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I would discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have to go to the board table now.
I can have the board.
Yep.
Ms. Cleary?
Thank you. Yes. Yes. Am I right?
Aye. The State's full name.
I, Kate Graff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ms. Cleary?
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Thiel?
Here. Yes. Good. I judge. Hold on, hold it up so I can reach it. Left hand. Sure.
I, Kathleen Thiel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
I, Samira Purdue.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will obey the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
I, Samira Purdue.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will obey the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
I, Samira Purdue.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will obey the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Glenn Mersky.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Thiel?
Here. Yes. Good. I judge. Hold on, hold it up so I can reach it. Left hand. Sure.
I, Kathleen Thiel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Thiel?
Here. Yes. Good. I judge. Hold on, hold it up so I can reach it. Left hand. Sure.
I, Kathleen Thiel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Purdue?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Winters?
I, Paul Winters.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Winters?
I, Paul Winters.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Ms. Winters?
I, Paul Winters.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
But no, I don't know. Can press that on as on your mic slide.
All right, a warm welcome to the board members returning and new. Can we have a round of applause for these board members? All right, thank you. I will now conduct the election of the board president for this board. This is for a one-year term, and it is my honor to nominate Jen Cancro for this position. Are there any other nominations for this position? Seeing that there are no more nominations, I will close nominations, and the following names shall be considered for office of president for one-year term, Jennifer Cancro. Are there any questions or comments on nominations from members of the board? All right, seeing none, with a roll call vote, members will state the name of the individual they are voting on. When called upon, the individual who gets five votes will be a president for one-year term. Roll call vote. My vote is for Ms. Cancro. Ms. Cancro?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Shanda?
Ms. Cancro. Cancro, sorry.
Ms. Cleary?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Graff?
Ms. Cancro.
Mr. Mersky?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Purdue?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Thiel?
Ms. Cancro.
Mr. Winters?
Ms. Cancro.
And congratulations to our new board president, Ms. Jennifer Cancro. I appreciate the support. So we'll move on to, I will now conduct the election of board vice president. This is for a one-year term. Do I have any nominations for vice president? I would like to nominate Ms. Samira Purdue. Seeing, is there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing that there are no more nominations, I will close nominations. The following names shall be considered for office of vice president for one-year term, Ms. Samira Purdue. Are there any questions or comments on nominations from members of the board? All right, seeing none, with a roll call vote, members will state the name of the individual they are voting on. When called upon, the individual who gets five votes will be a president for one-year term. Roll call vote. My vote is for Ms. Cancro. Ms. Cancro?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Shanda?
Ms. Cancro. Cancro, sorry.
Ms. Cleary?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Graff?
Ms. Cancro.
Mr. Mersky?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Purdue?
Ms. Cancro.
Ms. Thiel?
Ms. Cancro.
Mr. Winters?
Ms. Cancro.
And congratulations to our new board president, Ms. Jennifer Cancro. I appreciate the support. So we'll move on to, I will now conduct the election of board vice president. This is for a one-year term. Do I have any nominations for vice president? I would like to nominate Ms. Samira Purdue. Seeing, is there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing that there are no more nominations, I will close nominations. The following names shall be considered for office of vice president for one-year term, Ms. Samira Purdue. Are there any questions or comments on nominations from members of the board? Okay. Okay. Via roll call, board members will state the name of the individual they are voting for when called upon. The individual who gets five votes will be vice president for one-year term. Ms. Alston?
Ms. Samira Purdue.
Ms. Cancro? Ms. Samira Purdue. Ms. Chandra?
Ms. Samira Purdue.
Ms. Cleary?
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Graff?
Ms. Purdue.
Mr. Mersky?
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Thiel?
Ms. Purdue.
And Mr. Winters?
Ms. Purdue.
The vice president is Ms. Samira Purdue. Congratulations, Samira. We will, I will now conduct the election of Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board. This is to fill in an unexpired term through June 30th, 2024. Do I have any nominations for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board? Sorry, Mr. Winters?
Ms. Purdue.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no more nominations, I will close nominations. The following name will be considered for Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board to fill the unexpired term through June 30th, 2024, Ms. Purdue. Are there any questions or comments on the nomination from the board members? Okay. Via roll call, board members will state the name of the individual they are voting for when called upon. The individual who gets five votes will be Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Representative, Ms. Alston.
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Cancro is Ms. Purdue. Ms. Shanda?
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Cleary?
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Graff?
Ms. Purdue.
Mr. Mersky?
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Purdue.
Ms. Thiel?
Ms. Purdue.
And Mr. Winters?
Ms. Purdue.
The MCIU board rep is Ms. Purdue. Congratulations. I will now conduct the election of the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee. This is for a three-year term. This person will join Liz Alston on the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee for a total of two representatives. Do I have any nominations for the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee? Mr. Winters?
Glenn Mersky.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no more nominations, I will close nominations. The following name shall be considered for North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Mersky. Are there any questions or comments on the nomination for members of the board? Via roll call, board members will state the name of the individual they are voting for when called upon. The individual who gets five votes will be North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee, Ms. Alston.
Mr. Mersky.
Ms. Cancro has Mr. Mersky. Ms. Shanda?
Mr. Mersky.
Ms. Cleary?
Mr. Mersky.
Ms. Graff?
Mr. Mersky.
Mr. Mersky.
Mr. Mersky.
Ms. Purdue?
Mr. Mersky.
Ms. Thiel?
Mr. Mersky.
And Mr. Winters?
Mr. Mersky.
All right, the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee rep is Mr. Mersky. Congratulations. We will now consider the posted schedule of committee, work sessions, and voting meetings as posted to the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the meeting schedule as posted? Ms. Cleary, do I have a second? Ms. Purdue, any comments from members of the board? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, sign by stating aye. Any opposed, sign by stating nay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All, all opposed? Sorry, this is my new first roll call. Motion carries nine to zero. Okay, we will now take courtesy of the floor. The board of school directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on, number nine. Do we have the MCIU? Do we have the MCIU? Do we have to do the MCIU?
We did.
We did. We did. That was you.
You were voted as a supporter.
Sorry, we're, don't mind us. We're just getting used to this process. We're good. We're good. We will now take courtesy of the floor, excuse me. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion
Jim Malik, Warsester, this is going to be a fun year. It's all I got to say. But I'm happy you got it because I know Wayne can keep you in check. So maybe you can help me out with some facts. Somebody sent me a email that Dave, you sent to the entire school population that two 22 caliber bullets were found in a toilet. Now, if I'm wrong, correct me. I would normally say allegedly, but looks like your email. And that happened around 9:30 in the morning. You put a hold on everything till 10:30. And in your email, you said at no point during the 60-minute hold was the safety and well-being of students and staff at risk. So you caught the perpetrator at 9:30, and you just put everything on hold for an hour just because? Or you didn't have the perpetrator during that hour hold and then found the perpetrator an hour later? Which one, which one is that? Because if you don't have the perpetrator, you don't have any assurance that you're fine. And this brings me back to, you know, what I've said before. Fights in the classroom, all these other things going on, and all you guys want to do is spend money and build. Guys got to focus. This is serious stuff. Got to focus, come up with a plan to deal with this, or you're going to have a problem. So it's serious. I got some emails. Couple from a couple of your teachers back in October of '22 talking about a new high school inbound. How's that? Teachers know we got a new high school inbound in October of '22? How is that, Dave? And they give a bunch of reasons why, and you're mentioned in the email. You got Mike Kelly in an email to you talking to, talking about New Keith Valley Middle School, saying here's the closest local example to what you'd be looking at for a new high school. When are you going to tell us about all this behind-the-scenes new high school stuff going on? And the reason, one of the reasons we're building a new high school is KCBA sent you an email, Dave, regarding the HVAC project. They're the ones who suggested the hold on the HVAC project based upon HVAC estimates from another school. Yeah, I got 10 seconds. So you want to explain how that works? You don't go get your own estimates? You got KCBA telling you to do it?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Is there any else for the courtesy of the floor? Okay. Can I ask for a motion to adjourn? Ms. Cleary, do I have a second? Ms. Graff, the meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call the December 4, 2023, regular board meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the repurposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are present. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our new board members to the meeting. Next, we have guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have one, we have Mr. Bricker, who will be doing a follow-up to the Act One budget resolution that is found on your agenda for your consideration this evening and was presented at the work session in November for consideration to be placed on this evening's agenda. You have the handouts in front of you. Also, we will be posting this on the screen and then on the, to the website as it's posted on the agenda here this evening. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening. Tonight's presentation on the Act One Index and the recommendation by administration not to exceed the Act One Index. What is the Act One Index? Simply put, the Act One Index limits the amount that a school district can increase property taxes. This index is established by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and is the average, the state's average weekly wage and the employment cost index for secondary and elementary The 2024-2025 Act One Index, for the beginning of the budget cycle associated with the 24-25 budget, we use the Act One Index is 5.3%. This means without applying for and receiving an exception or going out to referendum, Matha School District cannot increase property taxes beyond 5.3%. Typically, Matha School District is eligible for either the retirement exception associated with Peasars or the special education exception. This year, Matha School District only qualifies for the special education exception, which, if taken, would allow the property taxes to be increased by 6.53%. The next slide is a chart that shows you where, that you can see the exception, I'm sorry. In the chart, you can see that with the exception of the 2016-2017 fiscal year, which followed a 0% tax increase, Matha School District has always been below the Act One And our next slide, this compares the Act One Index, Matha School District's property tax increase, and inflation. So you can see the year-over-year, how the inflation compares to the tax increase as well as the Act One Index. And then more importantly, if you look at the cumulative numbers, you can see how Matha School District's tax increase is well below the inflation rate as well as the cumulative Act One Index. So what drives our costs predominantly are staffing. So for the 2024-2025 budget, we are adding two mass specials at the K-4 level, and at this time, we have no other staffing changes. As we progress through the budgeting process, this will be continuously reviewed and changes made. They occur both with replacement staff and changes to staffing levels, which means as staff retires or changes in position, those will be captured and factored into the budget as we continue to go through the process. The next slide shows you where we are today. This slide is the main takeaway, is the factoring of all the budget requests, anticipated income. The district is currently at $16,992.41 above the expenses when using the full Act One Index on property taxes. So this leads us to where we are today. The Pennsylvania primary has been moved up, which moves up the Act One Index budgetary timelines for school districts. The deadline for the school district to determine what they plan to go over the Act One Index is January 4, 2024. As school board directors, you have three options. Option number one, to vote to approve a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index of 5.3%. Option number two, to vote to apply for the special education exception up to $1.1 million or a tax increase of roughly 6.53%. Or option number three, to vote to exceed the Act One Index and the exception limits by going out to referendum. The recommendation by administration is given that the Act One budgetary deadline of January 4, 2024, the administration is recommending that we place a motion on the December 4, 2024, voting meeting agenda to approve a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index for the 2024-2025 school year. So what would be the next steps? Well, for tonight, we'd be requesting that you approve the resolution 23-04, which is to not exceed the Act One Index for the 24-25 budget. January 24 through April 24, we'll be providing updates to the board on the status, to the finance committee as well, so that they can see where we are and how we're progressing through the budgeting process. In May or April 2024, we'll have a proposed final budget presentation. Board votes on approving the proposed final budget. In May or June, we'll have a final budget presentation. The board votes on approving the final budget for the 24-25 school year, and information is sent to the task collectors approving the Millage Rate and Homestead Act. Are there any questions to the presentation?
Before we take questions for Mr. Bricker, I just want to make sure that the board's clear on what we're asking this evening. This is not to approve the budget for the 24-25 school year. This is simply to authorize the administration to submit the resolution to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, letting them know that the school district does not intend to go over the, over 5.3%. That doesn't mean we will go to 5.3%. That doesn't mean we'll go to 5%. It doesn't mean we'll go to 2%, 1% or any percent. It just means we won't go over that threshold. Given the preliminary budget that was, that was at a high level, that was presented on the one slide in Mr. Bricker's presentation, it's clear to the administration that we're well within that range, even without doing our normal work in terms of reviewing all the requests. So with that said, I can tell you that we are confident that we will be within that threshold, and we consider, and we consider your vote for that this evening. Questions for Mr. Bricker or myself? To my left, Ms. Cancro?
No, I, my only comment is that I definitely vote for option one, to approve a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index of 5.3. But I do think it's important for us to really look at that. Matha does qualify for the special education exception. So I really would like to have you go through finance and then bring it back to us because it's really important to understand that there is an increased need. You know, I know, I'm not, don't exact, I don't know exact numbers, but I think there's well over 900 students that receive support through special education. That's almost 25% of our population within Matha. And it really, to know how much we really are spending in special ed and then how much has increased to make us qualify, because we are now going to take that and place that into our budget and make sure we're not exceeding the 5.3. So that's really important to understand, that we're going to be fiscally proactive staying under that. But we really need to give that some substantive understanding, the needs of our students. So that's the only thing I would request you bring back to us maybe at the next meeting in January.
We plan on doing that. Excellent request. Ms. Perdue?
No, I was going to add, Ms. Cancro, that was brought up at the finance committee meeting, so hopefully we'll hear more about that coming up. I did have a question in reference to the next steps for January through April 2024, and I noticed you mentioned we'll provide process status and update to the school board and also the finance committee. How will we also communicate these updates to members of the public? How would they be able to assess that, those updates?
So all budget presentations are on our website and are accessible by the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions to members of the board to my left? Seeing no other questions, how about members to my right? Ms. Cleary?
Mr. Bricker, I just, just not a question, but a comment. I wanted to say thank you so much for dealing with the acronyms, and I appreciate it. And I think all of, all of us can appreciate that going forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleary. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, repeating a comment from before. If people aren't wondering why we're doing it in this month, it's because next year is an election year and because the primary is the trigger point of working our way backwards, the Pennsylvania primary in April. So we have to complete this decision of which direction we're going by January 4. So normally, in a non-presidential year, this could probably wait till a January, January meeting. The second point was, on the high level, there's tons of assumptions that we haven't gone through, right? But the first assumption is the first look at the health care, it's 16.5% increase for medical and prescription, then all vision is flat. Often, that is the high end of the estimate with Buxmont. So that could be significantly different. So that is built into this high-level preliminary, preliminary budget. I repeat the word on purpose. The second point is a significant reminder to the public is that the current contract increases that are listed here in the high level is that next year's MEA contract will have a step change. The last two years of the current contract had a half, half a step. This will be a full step. So I believe those contract increases for the MEA is also a driver for some of the increased expenses. I completely stand by that for the reasons we talked about when we voted on it last year.
If there are no other questions, that ends the scheduled guests and speakers for this evening.
We will now move on to reports. We have no reports at this meeting, and we will return to updates in January. We'll move on to public comment on board action items. The board will now take comments on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items.
Jim Malik, Warsester, are you reading from a script up there? That's what I thought. Don't destroy it. Your comment about considering the million dollars, if you take that exemption, you're going to get audited. That's what happened to a whole bunch of other school districts. I would tell you not to do it. If you do, you're going to get audited. You guys want to limit the tax increase or the... You guys want to limit the tax increase or the whatever to 5.3%. My question is, back in September of this year is when the index came out. PDE published the index September 1. Nothing in September about it? Nothing in October about it? Nothing in November about it? You wait till after the election to pull this on the public. Why didn't you tell us about this index and what it was going to be and what what your plans were back when it came out, September 1 of this year? Transparency, no transparency. Guys, wait till after the election. That's kind of, it's kind of lame in my book. Mr. Bricker showed his comparisons for tax increase and we're below the index and all the other stuff. Where is the comparison or the discussion about the cost per pupil per year here? And the comparison to neighboring school districts? Where is that analysis? My calculations are it's 27 grand a year per pupil. Put you in the highest category of taxation of any school district in the area. So why don't you do an analysis of the cost per pupil per year here and compare it to the surrounding school districts and then compare that to test scores, outcomes and everything else? How about, how about some of that? You know, the stuff you don't, you know, find politically advantageous to you guys, you hide. Bring it out, show it to us and let us know what your plan is. 27 grand a year, that's like Germantown Academy. This should be Methacton Academy, not Methacton School District. And, you know, in listening to the conversation, you know, 5.3%? The inflation rate right now is 3%. 3% and it's going down. And you guys are going to stick with 5.3%? I know you're like, oh, it's not five, it'll be, it would be less than five, whatever. Inflation rate's 3% right now and it's going to be less six months from now. So I consider what you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment?
John Andrews, Law of Providence. Last year's board in November voted on various personnel items. And three of them were uncompensated leave for two or three months for special ed teachers. And again, this month, there's, there's one more special ed teacher taking that leave in the middle of the school year. And, you know, I've been told repeatedly that with, with, with many special ed students that being switched from one teacher to another is extremely disruptive to their education. And education is the, the prime reason why we're all here at meetings. So, and I, it seems to me some analysis needs to be done of why people who don't have intensive work schedules for half of the month of June, the whole month of July and half of the month of August have time off to do many other things. You know, why they, why four of your special education teachers need more time off in the middle of the school year? I, I think some explanation needed. Some years ago, when Bob Harney was the Personnel Director here, he said, yes, Methacton does have a lot of turnover. Well, this isn't turnover, but it's, it's presenting difficulty to considerable number of students. And I think there should be some, some discussion that elucidates to the public what may be going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment on board action items? Now we'll move on to board meeting minutes. The November and December minutes will be attached in January. We'll now move on to fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight for your approval is the 24, 25 budget resolution, which is to approve the adoption of the Act One Index Resolution Number 23 dash oh four for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year budget not to exceed the Act One Index.
May I have a motion to approve the fiscal items listed as presented? Ms. Alston? Have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. We'll now move on to personnel items. Dr. Sorjini?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. For the consideration of the board in the month of December, we have the following personnel items. One resignation professional, Rebecca Wyble, Special Education Instructor at Skyview. We thank Rebecca for her service to the students in Methacton and we wish her well. One temporary change of status classified Derrick Donardo from Master Mechanic HVAC to Assistant to the Director of Facilities effective December 5th, 2023 through January 31st, 2024, with an update on further need provided to the board in January. We have one uncompensated leave administrative Timothy Barbagallo, Assistant to the Director of Facilities, retroactively from November 27th, 2023 through December 11th, 2023. We have one uncompensated leave classified Susan Millar, Power Professional at Eagleville from January 9th through January 18th, 2024, and under supplemental contracts, extended season pay for all of our fall coaches as per the attached list. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented? Mr. Winters? Can I have a second? Ms. Cleary? Any questions or comments from the board? The only question I say, is there anything that you could give in reference to the special ed teacher in this matter?
Unfortunately, when we deal with resignations and also leaves, most of that information is confidential and it often involves FERPA and HIPAA issues. So I really can't provide anything other than to thank individuals who resign for their service to the, the district and provide you the dates for uncompensated leave.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Can I, all are in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to curriculum and programs. The Curriculum Committee will resume in January. Move on to policy. Again, that Policy Committee will resume in January. And other? Dr. Zerbi?
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, there's two matters on, on the agenda for the board's consideration. The first is a service agreement and it reads, approve the staffing services agreement with expirations to provide interim elementary principal services at five or 660 per day for approximately 120 student days during the 23, 24 school year to begin on or about January 22nd, 2024. Let me explain a little bit about that. We, as, as many of you know, our high school principal, Dr. Jamie Gravenese, will be moving to the position of Director of Pupil Services beginning January 1st. And that means that vacated her position. The board then approved Dr. Uker, who is the Elementary Principal at Woodland Elementary School as the new high school principal effective on January 1st. In order to get ourselves in the position to best advertise and to find a suitable candidate to replace Dr. Uker at Woodland Elementary School, we need an interim individual who has experience that can, you know, provide principal services to us at Woodland. Until such time, we have a, a candidate to bring before the board and approve. Please know that generally speaking, our, the hiring season for administrators and teachers in, in public education is usually sometime between February and June. So it is our plan, according to Dr. Sorjini, that we'll be advertising for that position. We will in February, likely when we go through the, the general, I'll call it round robin interview process where we have members of the board, a member, members of the, the staff, our parents involved in a number of other groups. That takes us through the process. Likely someone who has experience could be held for 60 days and therefore it would take us up until April, May, possibly even June, where, till we actually get a candidate in the seat. So with this, Explorations is a, is a, a company run by the Montgomery County Intermedia Unit and they provide this service for which we're asking for your approval this evening. Similar to other districts, they do it for other principal roles as well, and that's what this is all about. Before I go on to the next, well, the next item, are there any questions about that? Because I know that's kind of new. We haven't seen that anytime in the, in the recent future. Ms. Perdue?
I'm just curious and maybe Dr. Sorjini, how come it doesn't specifically list the school and it just have it as elementary principal?
We have a generalized job description of elementary principal, which has been provided to the IU. So they include that description and then for, they, they just listed as interim principal. So, but he will be serving at Woodland.
Yeah, the individual's name is listed on the attached agreement as part of that, but our agreement is with Explorations, not with the individual.
No, and I wasn't asking about the individual name. I was just wondering why we didn't list the school specifically for this item on the agenda. That's all.
I don't think there was any intent to not list it. It just isn't listed at this moment in time, but that is where the opening is. And I, and I hope that my explanation here this evening is clear in, in the sense that, you know, it is for Woodland Elementary School and only Woodland Elementary School. Any other questions to members to my left? Members to my right? Seeing none? The second item is 13B trips is approve the high school girls indoor track and field trip to participate in the Bishop Loughlin Games on December 17th, held in Staten Island, New York. And that ends the items under other.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the items under other as listed? Ms. Alston? Do I have a second? Ms. Thiel? All right. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. We'll move on to old business. Do we have any items under old or new business? Only thing I would, I would like to add again is just congratulations. I look forward to serving with you the next two years that I have remaining, but also congratulations and, and looking forward to seeing where you would like to be under committees and, and all your engagement in the community. So thank you. Welcome and enjoy the ride.
Yeah, if I, if I could just mention, typically the, the board president, you know, works with the rest of the board members and conducts the organization of the committees of the board. That'll then be provided to me and then we will be posting that on the district website once that's prepared.
Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School of Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You could also please submit any questions via email to information@methacton.org.
John Andrews, Law of Providence. I commented earlier this evening on the agenda, the, the absence of swearing in of new, seven new directors. And again, I noticed that there are several places in, in the copy that was available to the public that, that appear to me to be an older version of, of what was posted on, on the internet yesterday. So I don't think I'm mistaken in that regard. And the, for instance, for the service agreement, the copy that, that was provided this evening says that the, at the end of it, that the activity would begin about January 22nd. And I seem to recall what I saw on the, on the internet yesterday. Also had, had a, an end date, not just a beginning date. A a separate item is that annually, the district has an outside firm do an audit. And normally we hear about that at committee meetings in, in October. Now here we are in December and the administration has been totally silent about the audit. So I think, I'm not sure what the deadlines are on that, but I think the public needs some explanation as to progress on, on the, on that audit. So I, I do welcome the new directors. You've, you're taking on a challenge and, and I, I respect your interests and, and your, your dedication to trying to do the best possible job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Malick, War Sester. I enjoyed the swearing in portion when I got to hear about how you guys have to obey the Constitution. And it kind of brought back memories for me of a prior board enforcing a illegal and unconstitutional Board Policy 903. I think you remember that. So I think you guys need to really think about what you're doing up there in, in your swearing in ceremony. You have a problem with your right to know process. Dave, you got up here and gave your little spiel about how you anticipate costs going up and had a litany of things you talked about. But you didn't talk about how a totally independent entity, the Methacton Education Foundation, is somehow immune to the right to know law. They ask you for information and you give it to them. No right to know forms, no right to know requests. And they're making tons of them. Here's one from the foundation making a request for parent data. First name, last name, address, zip, email, phone number. Gave it to them, no problem. Didn't tell them to file a right to know request. How's that work? They're not part of the, of the district. How does that work? Here's one, District Head of Households. Just give it up. It's like, hey, Dave, can we have the head of households? Sure. No problem. Jim Malick, you got a million dollars of legal fees trying to keep my information out of my hands. But the foundation somehow is immune to the right to know. How is that? How does that work? Here's one from Tim Bricker to the foundation, giving them all the companies in Methacton. I can't find any right to know requests, forms, anything. No wonder, you know, you know, you got the situation where there's two, two classes. There's the public and then, you know, people you want to give into information to without a problem. Here's one, Tim Bricker. Vendor list. I don't see any right to know requests, forms. Here's another one. Business participants. Here's another one. 2013 through 2017 and 2018 to 2020, prior class lists. You think I could get that under right to now? Names, address, contact info? You think I could get that? So I need you to stop giving me a lecture on right to now until you clean up what you're doing. Because what you're doing right now? Because what you're doing right now is not right.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? When you come up, just so you're new, you're just going to write, you're going to say your name and the municipality that you're at, you're from?
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Mehvish Termezi. I'll spell that for you. M-E-H-V. Sorry, M-E-H-W-I-S-H. I was spelling my email address.
Yeah, just take a minute, take a minute. And then say it again, and then we'll start the time.
Yeah, so Mehvish, M-E-H-W-I-S-H. Last name Termezi, T-I-R-M-I-Z-I. And we are in Lower Providence.
Thank you.
Today, I'd like to request the Mathacton Board and the Mathacton School District to acknowledge and add a, a holiday, a Muslim holiday, which is Eid. We have two Eid holidays. They're very similar to Christmas or Hanukkah for other faiths. But these holidays are celebrated throughout all of the Muslims in the school districts and around the world. And what happens is our, our kids, we, you know, they end up missing school that day and missing a lot of schoolwork that day. And it would be nice for them to be officially off and have their friends also be off the same day so they can celebrate with friends and family. There's over 10 school districts in the area that have already officially accepted the holiday and added them to their official calendar. So the entire school district is off. Some of them are, one of our closest ones is Springfield. There's the School District of Philadelphia, Tredahfin, Downingtown, West Chester, Great Valley School District, and Coatesville and Upper Marion. So as you can see, a lot of the surrounding districts have already accepted this holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, you're going to state your name and your municipality, please.
Hello, I'm JT of Skyview. And I just want to say, I'd like to ask you again to make Eid an official holiday, just like Christmas, Yom Kippur, Hanukkah were off. However, we're not off for Eid. I want to spend time with families without subconsciously worrying about missing school and being behind. And I'm sure other students would love to be off, whether they're celebrating or not. So I'm just asking to please add Eid on the calendar. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Please state your name and your municipality, please.
Mohammed Fazli, Lower Providence. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. I stand before you as a student of Mathacton High School who values the diversity and inclusivity our school district strives to uphold. I want to draw attention to a matter that holds significant importance to a portion of our student body, the inclusion of Eid, a significant Islamic holiday in our list of days off. Our school district has rightfully recognized the importance of cultural and religious diversity by providing days off for Jewish holidays. I appreciate and applaud this inclusive approach. However, I believe there is an opportunity to further enhance this inclusivity by extending the same courtesy to the Muslim community during Eid. As a student of Mathacton High School, I've encountered challenges celebrating Eid. While my friends may have the day off on their respective holidays, like Christmas, I find myself immersed in course, in coursework and exams, unable to fully participate in the joyous celebrations with my family and community. It's disheartening to feel the need to balance the academic responsibilities with the desire to celebrate a culturally significant day. This isn't just about having a day off. It's about recognizing and respecting the diversity within our student body. By providing a day off for Eid, we not only acknowledge the importance of this Islamic holiday, but also demonstrate our commitment to fostering an environment where all students can practice their faith without compromising their academic responsibilities. I urge the school board to consider this proposal as an opportunity to reinforce our commitment to diversity, inclusivity, and understanding among our students. Extending the same consideration to Eid as given to other religious holidays is a step towards creating an educational environment where every student feels valued and understood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Hello, I'm Termezi from Lower Providence. I'm not going to take the whole three minutes. But as a Muslim who originally grew up in New York, always felt represented and felt that I was seen. But ever since moving to Pennsylvania, I've felt that getting days off for the kids has always been a struggle, as one of my senses. Because I was just said that there is a subconscious, almost a feeling that, oh, my God, you're taking days off from school and there's schoolwork missing and exams and all that's going on. So there's, that's a challenge. And it's always been a struggle due to lack of this official holiday. So I stand before you guys, asking to adopt the Islamic holiday of Eid in this 24, 25 calendar year and onward, just the surrounding school districts have done so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for courtesy of the floor?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Sabina Fazli. I'm a physician in the United States for more than 26 years. And I have actually had--
Just state your municipality, too. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I live in Lower Providence. My kids, I have five kids. All five of my kids go, go to Mathacton School District. And I would just like to say that I have not only lived in different parts of the United States, I have actually lived in different parts of the world. And it is very agonizing for me that we have to be even making this request. So why do we have to be even asking for something that other major religions rightfully had the opportunity to celebrate their major auspicious days? Why do we, as a community, have to even ask for something like this? That's very, very appalling. So I hope that this resolution can be passed effectively without being brushed under the carpet, especially because our neighboring districts have also, have always, have already followed suit. And our friends in other school districts, renowned school districts, like my friend and sister rightfully mentioned, they are already imparting this vacation to their students. So, you know, justice delayed is justice denied. And, you know, the delay has already occurred. So I would appreciate it if, without further ado, the board would take this resolution into consideration and pass it very effectively. Because I have, like I said, I have five students, five kids who have been to Mathacton School District. Two of them are actually in college now. So we've been in this area for a long, long time. And this is actually the first time I have come to one of these board meetings. I'm sure many other people come here habitually. I, I, I don't, because I know you, all of you have enough things on your hands. But, you know, this is something that, especially in current world circumstances, we rarely feel alienated. And, you know, I feel that this is high time that our voices are heard. And I know, I know our sentiments will resonate with you because you have kids and you have, you know, family members and you enjoy occasions with family. And family is very important to us. We really value humanity and our families very highly. So I, I urge you to take this matter into consideration, and I want effective action immediately, please. So if you could just prioritize this issue, especially given current world circumstances. And not to mention the instance, I didn't want to go off label, but the incident that happened earlier today, I don't think we can brush that under the carpet, too. So it's very important for us to have harmony among our students, understanding--
I apologize. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Hi, I'm Shayam Termezi of Lower Providence, and I go to Mathacton High School. I think that me and other Muslims should be off for Eid, which is a holiday just like Christmas, Hanukkah, or any other. Having to take off for school is an unfortunate thing. I have to do it while other school districts, my friends are in, already have off and don't, and they don't have to worry about missing school or any work, making up tests. So I ask that you please actually take this into consideration and give us off for Eid. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Hi, everyone. Matt Rossi, Lower Providence. I came tonight, I wanted to voice my feelings towards the situation that happened at Skyview today. I apologize that I was late. I'm sure at some point it was addressed to some extent. My daughter was sitting next to the student in the classroom. My questions, and I'm hoping that possibly when the meeting's over, someone can address this privately. How do we find out what actually occurred? Because my daughter, sitting in the same classroom as the student who was taken out, who was responsible for the situation, the way she describes the actions of the school while handling an extremely stressful, high tension situation as best as they can, I want to know what the procedure is. I want to know what the steps are, because I don't think they were followed very well today. School went on lockdown at approximately 9:30. The student remained in the classroom for five minutes after that. That's ridiculous. A lot can happen in five minutes. I called Lower Providence Police Department tonight to find out what their involvement was. They were brought in, as far as they described. Now, they weren't given a lot of details, so I might not have all the information on this part. They were brought in to deal with the student after the fact. I understand there's an armed officer here on site. There's one officer in this whole building at the time of this incident. Now, I, I get what it is, but there's a lot more to it than what is being told to us. There were students that were threatened prior to it, and I want to know what's going on. So where does that information come from to the parents? My daughter was five feet from this child today. Now, I understand bullets are one thing, but where there's bullets, there may be a gun. And it's ridiculous. My daughter's scared out of her mind. We live right behind this school. And this situation hit home quick. What are you going to do about it? Where do we get that information from? Who's going to tell us what actually occurred? Were the proper steps followed? Was there a team on site if this student went into an active shooter scenario? I want answers. And I'm sure there's a lot of parents in this building and that send their students here every day that want answers to this, because I don't want to be a statistic. And I'm sure you don't want to be involved in statistics. You can see, I'm very upset about this. I, I know you can't answer me right now, but I'm hoping someone at the end can have a rational conversation with me. I would appreciate that. I'll stay at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Is there any final comments from the-- Oh, sorry, sorry. I apologize.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sima Rathod, R-A-T-H-O-D, and I live in Lower Providence. I wanted to thank you all, first and foremost, for your leadership. I know there's a lot of important things that are on your plate, so I really appreciate your, taking the time to listen to all of us. I recently moved to the district about a year ago. I have kids at Skyview and at Woodland Elementary School. And I grew up in the Norristown area. And I didn't have a lot of other kids who are like me in the district. And so when I moved here with my kids, it was really heartening to see all the other kids that, and their friends, they talk about who celebrate the holidays that, that we do also. So, and then I also have a lot of extended family members who graduated from the Acton School District. For my extended family alone, we have about 20 alumni. And we're all, you know, we all celebrate the Eid holidays. And I, I know that it would, it would mean a lot to them as alums. And I think it would mean a lot to my kids also if, if you would also, if the district would celebrate Eid for the kids also. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other--
Yeah, I'm not sure of my time restarts or--
Unfortunately, we, yeah, they only allow one time to come to the podium. But you can offer any comments or questions through the email that we have here attached as well. I apologize.
Quick question about what Father said earlier, about the, I spoke to Dr. Zerbi. He emailed me back, actually. Yeah.
Well, we'll address the comments and questions after. Thank you. Sorry, there's a standard for following the meeting. So thank you for your patience in this. All right, any final comments from the board members?
Yeah, I just want to answer a couple of things if I could. In terms of the audit, as, as the board should know, and maybe new members might not know this, but about two years ago, we went with new auditors. As a part of that move to the new auditors, the auditing timeline is adjusted. Yes, we used to get the audit from our old auditors in October, but we have and communicated consistently that we would be receiving that in December with presentations and updates to the board in January. So that is going to be the cycle this period going forward. It was what it was last year. And again, is it what it is this year? It will be what it is the next year. The only way that will likely change is if we change auditors. And we do do that from time to time. The next item I want to address is the calendar. Please know that the Education Committee of the Board, when they meet in January, will see the first draft that the administration has. And just so you know, the process that, that goes is we develop a calendar. We then share that calendar with the Mathacton Education Association. They do give us some feedback on the particular calendar. And then the, the calendar is then shared with the Education Committee of the Board. It is at that point in time, there are discussions, you know, possibilities of ads changes, all that kind of stuff takes place. And hopefully, no later than February of 2024, we would adopt a calendar for the new school year. In terms of the current school year, given the request, I'm not certain when these holidays that were being asked for, when do they actually occur. But that calendar, unless the board so chooses to modify the existing school calendar, no changes would take effect until next school year, assuming that changes are considered based on the request here this evening towards that. Does, does that make sense? I just want to make sure everybody's squared away with that. And, and I think to, to the gentleman's comment with respects to the matters that occurred at Skyview, there was a follow-up communication that was sent to parents later this evening with a little bit more detail. Certainly, if, if the gentleman would like to stay afterwards, I'd be glad to meet with him. And, and if there's anyone else that wants to do that, I'd be glad to meet with them as well. It's important that, you know, that, that the, the administration has in place a, not only a, a strong relationship with Lower Providence and the state police, but also, we have a, a third-party security and, and safety company that advises us. We do follow a national protocol for addressing threats in, in the school system. With that, and then including in my email this evening, it was so indicated that while we did find two bullets as part of the discovery, we, we confirmed that there are no, there is no access to firearms. There are no firearms in the household. There was no ill intent associated with the matter and that there was no intent other than to show the, the items that were found apparently in a shed that was being cleaned out this past weekend at the family's home. So with that, with all due respect, I, I certainly recognize the seriousness of the matter. And I want, I want everyone to know that our team, along with the, with Lower Providence, did the investigation via the protocol properly and, and addressed those matters. There are some matters associated with the outcome that are hard to communicate only because there's a delicate balance between what we're able to say with respects to the child and, and, and that overall situation. So I do apologize if it seems not as informative as one would like, but we do have an obligation to protect the, the anonymity of, of the child and, and the consequences for which would be concluded. The, the child, however, I can say this, and I said this in my email, the child is subject to the, the, the Code of Student Conduct. That is outlined in the Skyview Upper Elementary School Handbook. That is a matter that's approved by the board on an annual basis and any other repercussions associated with law enforcement regarding the possession of those matters. That's all I have in terms of follow-up comments.
I would just, oh, I would just like to take a moment and do some comments as well. I want to thank the public for coming and speaking on behalf of looking at the calendar and reviewing it for all religious holidays. So we will be able to bring that up to the Education Committee and have conversation and be able to review that and ask as a request. I would like to particularly thank the students of Methacton. I'm pretty impressed with all of you. I'm proud of the students that you're able to speak your voice and, and you're being heard. So you're, you have a board here to listen to you. So you will be able to hear the results and follow it. We'll tell you if you wanted to visit the Education Committee meeting, you can participate in that as well. But then it also can follow up. You'll see what's going on at the work session and then again at the school board meeting, where we do the final vote in February, just so you understand the process. So thank you for your time. And then I also do think with the incident that did happen, Dr. Zerbi, I would just like to really be able to maybe provide an educational piece back to the, the parents on the process, showing that, I think that's important to have them understand. But then an educational piece to the students on what this incident was, but as a learning matter for them to understand the, you know, what they're dealing with.
That's, that's a fair, you know, it, it did work today because we had, we had students tell a trusted adult. And that's how this all came to our attention. So first thing tomorrow morning, both Principal Bericle and Principal Baudrillard will be communicating with their students and their staff as an update with respects to our Safe to Save something, a protocol that, that we use in the schools. And we are in the process of creating an administrative guideline that, that goes in conjunction with creating more awareness of the Safe to Save program as well as some other reporting matters to help draw attention to our students and staff. But when they see something, to say something as simple or as, as minor as, as something might be, the more that we know about it, our obligation as adults to tell the, then to tell the principal, then to, to take something to a threat assessment team to evaluate things is, 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 is not only, should be customary for what we do, but certainly be a priority. And so I, I, I appreciate those comments.
Ms. Perdue?
Thank you. I, I do have a follow-up question in reference to the incident today. And I think a lot of times what, and parents are not asking specifically for a student to be named, but when you reference the national protocol, they just want to know, what do we have in place in Methacton to ensure that when an incident like this happen, what are the steps that we are taking? So I would like you to, tonight, maybe just summarize some of the steps that we take in general for situations like this.
There's a, there's a, there's a clear reason why we don't say what protocol we're using. I'm sorry?
Just in general.
I would, I would prefer having the conversation with my, my safety team before I, I say anything with, with respects to the protocol. And, and in all fairness, once we release the, the protocol, it is no longer safe for us to, for someone to understand the steps that we take as part of that. And, and so the moment I say what it is and what the steps are, though, they're as good as giving the floor plans out to our buildings and say, here's, here's, here's how we do things. So I need to consult with our safety experts before I would respond to that question. And, and all, and all fairness, I mean, it just, I, I think it's just the right thing to do. And I can, I can certainly get back to the board on that, but I, I just don't, I just don't think that's, I'm not prepared to make that, that today, that, that comment.
Okay, that's fair. And I, the reason why I ask is just because, and it goes back to what I said before. Parents just want to know, I think any, any of us sitting here at this board and also in the audience have students in Methacton, have had students in Methacton, will have students in Methacton. And we also have students in the audience. I think for a lot of them, they just want to know when something happened, what are the steps that we are taking? Without providing full disclosure of our protocol, but they just want to ensure that when they send their kids out the door, and I think we are doing that, we are making sure that they are safe and sending them back home safely. But they, there are people that have concerns and they just want to know what protocols we're, we are following. I think that may be something that I think you can bring back once you figure out exactly how to summarize it to put people's mind at rest.
Yep. Ms. Cleary?
So I just want to say to the gentleman that came to speak about the, the incident today at the school, I, I appreciate you standing up and saying it. I'm a mother of a college student who was involved in a mass shooting last year. So I'm, it, I know it's not the same right now, but I'm highly sensitive to your comments. My suggestion that I wanted to make was, I, I hear what, what Ms. Perdue was saying. Perhaps maybe my ask might be slightly different. That I understand that you cannot release the protocols and, and then it, it, you know. But how about you do an internal review of what did happen today? And make sure that all of the steps that you do have set up in our protocol were followed, that we think it was effective, evaluate whether we need to tweak anything. Because, you know, everybody's right, like today was great, but meaning nothing happened in terms of violence. I, I apologize for misspeaking, I'm a little fired up. We're, I think we're lucky, right, compared to what happens at other, what's hap, what can happen. So I just want us to look at what we did, make sure that we feel good about what we did, we don't need to tweak anything, et cetera. I don't know what you can share with the board or what you can't, but I just ask that we do that.
Absolutely, that is, we, whenever we have incidents like this, our, our head of our, our security team and our--
Great.
We do.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Craft?
Yeah, I, I also wanted to thank the, the parent for coming forward and, and raising this issue because I think as a parent, we all have been in situations where, you know, for one reason or another, we have a fear about our kid and the, what they're going through. And I also want to just make sure that tomorrow, when those teachers are showing up, the principal has a plan in place that students can ask for counseling support or, you know, talking through it in a way with either with their peers in class or something to provide these kids a way to work through this and process. As parents, many of us have never been in this situation. It would be very difficult for us to try to process this with our kids. But we have excellent counseling services that could be of assistance to the children. And I also think we as, as adults tend to focus on nothing terrible happened and we move on. But that may not be how it felt to those kids in that classroom. So I just want to make sure that if your child needs some extra support tomorrow, we definitely have counseling services to support them, so.
And I will add, that was also stated in Dr. Zerbi's email about the supports. But I do want to add also Dr. Sergini as Assistant Superintendent and those in charge of safety. If we're able to do a follow-up review for the board and for the public so that we have it in a nice presentation would be great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. With that said, I'm going to move to adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Winters, do I have a second? Will you? Okay. Ms. Cleary? All right. Meeting is adjourned at 8:33. Thank you.